We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the City Council regular meeting agenda tonight. It is 6:00 PM, Tuesday, May 21st, 2024. We're at Granbury City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas, 76048. I'd like to remind you that we do have this on www.granbury.org/live. That's for live transmission tonight, and that we will also have it at a later time. You can pull it up on the YouTube channel. So I am now going to call us to order, and if Mr. Fred Orchid will bring us in with prayer and invocation, certainly appreciate it. Please stand, and then we will continue with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Thank you. Pray with me. Our Father God, we praise and exalt your holy name. You are worthy of glory, honor, and praise. We acknowledge that you are the giver of life and of all good things. You have been so good to us, especially in sending Jesus, our Lord and Savior, to die on the cross to pay for our sins and rise again to lead us to real life. Thank you, Lord. You have truly blessed us. One of the good things you have done for us was to institute government at all levels of our society. We are here tonight to participate in our most local form of government, our Granbury City Council. Father, thank you for our mayor and to these council members. Thank you for those who serve us as employees and as volunteers. They are all a blessing from you. Bless them all, Father, abundantly. Bless their marriages and their families. Thank you for Granbury. It's a very pleasant place to live and rear our children, grandchildren, a city where we're free to worship as you desire and where our presence as the body of Christ is not only tolerated but appreciated. Father, fill Mayor Jarrett and the council members Rodriguez, Wadley, Overdair, Vale, and Corrigan with your wisdom, with courage, and with integrity so that their actions will redound to your glory and the welfare of our citizens. Bless City Manager Kaufman with faithfulness and integrity to execute the policies of the mayor and the council, to provide them with wide, wise counsel, and to represent city employees well. Lord, perhaps today more than ever before, many of us are afraid of the future. It seems like our world is turning upside down. Hatred and vitriol are all around us, even here in Hood County. Father, we know that you have not given up control of your creation, and we trust in you. Deliver us from fear and from further vitriol. Teach us to seek and follow your will, and when we disagree with each other, to do so with grace. Enable our mayor and council to deal with issues rationally, fearlessly, and with compassion in accordance with your word so that righteousness will prevail and you will be glorified. Thank you, Father. We ask all this, trusting in our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Now, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the American flag, and we will follow it with the pledge to the Texas flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, we have a proclamation tonight. Would you mind coming up and joining with me, please? Special occasion. Do you know why that tape's there? I think they messed up something before. Yes, very good. This is a official proclamation. Whereas on May 25th, 2024, Granbury Masonic Lodge Number 392 will celebrate their 150th anniversary. 150. You were not here. They thought about you. Whereas members past and present of the Granbury Masonic Lodge have faithfully served our community as public servants, businessmen, and participates, participants in area activities and projects, and whereas lodge members support educational excellence through scholarships and awards to students and teachers in Granbury and surrounding communities, and whereas masons have served in the founding and building of the state of Texas and in great capacity in our American history. Now, therefore, I, Jim Jarrett, Mayor of the City of Granbury, Texas, do hereby recognize May 25, 24 as Granbury Masonic Lodge sesquicentennial day and congratulate all who have been part of the Granbury Masonic Lodge. This is given under my hand, the seal of the City of Granbury, on this 21st day of May 2024. Jim Jarrett, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thank you so much. I'll present this proclamation to you. 150 years. That's outstanding. Words of wisdom for this group?
First of all, Mayor Jarrett, council members, thank you very much for this proclamation. It means a lot to us, as does the day for 150 years. A little bit known, the first lodge in Granbury was not in Granbury. It was in Acton. Out there at the Acton Cemetery, you'll find a chapel, and in the stained glass, you'll see the square and compass of the masons. The reason it was there is because back there in that time, horseback and buckboards, they couldn't get across the river, so they built it there. Then as soon as they built the bridge, then it was moved to Granbury, and of course, we were on the east side of the square to the year 2000. Brother Langsford donated the land out on 51 to where we have our present lodge and built, built it up. Masons, what we do here in Hood County and across the state of Texas as Texas masons is we're very involved in infrastructure and interfacing with the charities of Hood County, and also, we are very involved with the educational system, not only just the high schools, but all the way through. I just got through presenting scholarships at all three high schools, La Pan, Toler, and Granbury, and it's well received, and we've been participating in that program for many years. But this proclamation and what's going to happen Saturday night at 6:30, going to be an excellent meal, homemade desserts, and I've got the Grand Lodge of Texas Officers coming in from Waco and other dignitaries, and this proclamation will be also read and represented by Granbury by Judge Hines. But we thank you all so very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I had suspected that 377 had been a problem for a while. Couldn't get across the river? And we have an opportunity to recognize and issue encouraging statements recognizing city staff, and then we have a special recognition. We don't get many of these very often, but would you like to, anybody have something to say on behalf of city staff, recognizing city staff tonight?
Mayor.
Mr. Vale.
So the last, I guess, handful of days, there have been a couple of videos that have come out from, from the city. One was about Memorial Day, and Memorial Day obviously is Monday. I will be down at Memorial Lane. I know the mayor will be down there as well. We invite all of you to participate in that event. And then secondly, I watched a video this morning called While You Were Sleeping. And if you haven't seen that yet, I would encourage you to watch that, and I know Chris has spoken about this over the years, that, you know, New York, New York is not the only city that doesn't sleep, because if you're out late at night here, hopefully you won't run into a police officer, but there are people out from Public Works working, keeping all the lights on, keeping the water running, keeping our wastewater plant running, and also, we opened the airport up very early, so part of that video, I won't spoil it, was Gary Kozart opening up our airport. So I'd encourage you to watch that. They're both very, very well done, and I think it's another example of the quality of the work that is put out from the City of Granbury to our citizens to keep them informed of what's going on and let them know the services that the city provides to them. So, great job. Thank you.
Other comments? Go ahead, Mr. Kaufman.
Obviously, we, we've got a great team, and the video speaks volumes. I do want to put in a shameful plug for in the morning at 9:00 AM for the Friends of Tourism breakfast that we're having at the conference center. All are invited, anybody in the community is invited to come to that. We've got a donut wall and all kinds of fun stuff, and there's a lot of volunteers that are going to be recognized tomorrow morning, and that's what helps our community. I think that's really my message for right now is, you know, we've got a lot of paid staff, but we've got a lot of volunteers and part-time people out there, too, that really, really do go the extra mile to help us deliver the, the total package of Granbury to the, to the world. And so just wanted to say thank you to all those volunteers. We're going to do that properly in the morning. We want to invite you to be there. If you're listening online, we invite you to be there. Just wanted to say that. And then I can't, can't think Public Works Department enough. We had Paul Gass stepped in as our interim for a little bit. I want to recognize him for doing a great job while he was interim Public Works Director, and we thank you for that service, sir, and that's all I've got for tonight.
Very good. I just wanted to take a quick opportunity before we get to the consent agenda. There is an item on the consent agenda that, about the parks and some activity that, that we, you know, hopefully will get passed tonight, but in passing that, I just want to compliment the entire parks, the entire park staff and the Parks and Recreation Commission because of their tenacity to see this project through and to get it to the point where it's looking good. We'll, we'll know later tonight, but I really admire the tenacity of this group, and this, this is a great project. Mr. Kaufman, do you mind if we go back out front and, Mr. Overdair? Could you join us, please? Thank you. Maybe you should take the mic. This is, uh, this is an honor. I mean, we have our newest member to the council, and I'm going to let Mr. Kaufman take over from here.
Many of y'all may be aware of Texas Municipal League. They are a support organization that supports member cities across the state, a couple of thousand of us, and they have a training program for newly elected and elected officials. It doesn't have to be newly elected to do this, but it's a 40-hour course that takes place over a five-day period, basically, and it was scattered out over two months, but we want to recognize our council member Skip Overdair for accomplishing the training, and he's got the Leadership Fellow Award, and we want to present that to him tonight and thank him for his educational endeavors to be all that he can be as a council member. So thank you very much. Did I get the right amount of hours, classroom hours? I think it's exactly 40 classroom hours, two and a half days twice, and pretty in-depth training, and so we look forward to him sharing what he learned with us, and also, maybe we can send more people to it in the future.
You want to say that? Well, no, I, one of the things that, of course, if any of you were in any of the forums last fall when I was running for city council, one of the things that I always keyed on was that I think to be on the Granbury City Council, you need to be a leader. And I mean, I've been to a lot of leadership training throughout the years in the Air Force and other places I've been and lived, and I even taught leadership for a while, but I will tell you that every leadership class that I've gone to, especially including this one, you always learn something new. I don't care how old you are, how experienced you are, or how much of a leader you are. And so this was a great class, and there's a lot of great people in it, and it was a good experience, and I echo what Chris said. I think that it's something that we ought to have all of our city council members or do, and there was a lot of people there, chiefs of police, chiefs of the fire department, people from finance, there was a librarian there, so the, the program is open to everybody, and so it's, it's a good program, and I would encourage everybody to, to look into it.
You have to admire those who walk the talk. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Always be a pleasure being here first and third Tuesdays. So, Ms. Walker, do we have anyone who's signed up for public comments on? We have no one who's signed up, so I'm going to go ahead and skip the verbiage on that and move to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine or previously discussed items and will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the city council wish to discuss any item, and such item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. Does anyone have a need to pull anything off to further discuss it? Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion's made. Mr. Corrigan, seconds. Mr. Overdair, seconds and thirds. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Okay. Move on to our deliberation agenda. Special guest tonight. We, uh, tonight, we will receive the Hood Central Appraisal District First Quarter 2024 Report and consider adopting a resolution number 24.02 requesting the Hood Central Appraisal District add a forensic audit to be provided to the taxing units. Mr. Jeff Law, our chief appraiser, has been working with us over the past, what, four or five months now? New guy, but I think has some, yeah. And you'll need to punch, there is a button up there somewhere to punch to turn that on, okay? Thank you, and I do, you know, I know that over the past few months, we've had some active conversations back and forth. I want to compliment you and your staff, particularly your staff. I mean, they've, they've just been more than, more than forthcoming and very, very helpful. So looking forward to your first quarter report here.
Absolutely. Well, Mayor and members of the council, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be able to come and speak tonight. The mayor had asked me that if I would come and provide you all with this quarterly update on basic operations of the appraisal district and this and that. Some of the activities that we face are normal, routine, been doing it for a long time, but others have been, have been and are rather complex, and some of the things that I've been working on as the new chief appraiser have some complexity to them, but we've spent many, many hours working on them and accomplishing them and moving forward. Before I'd like to start, and I appreciate the mayor recognizing our staff, but I also want to publicly thank our appraisal district staff for all the hard work that they do in order to make what we do possible. They get to talk to many friendly faces, but sometimes they get to talk to a few not-so-friendly faces, and that can be a challenge. But overall, I, I want, I want the council to know, and I want the public to know, that our goal is to really find common ground between us and the taxpayer, especially when it comes to the appraisals. Appraisals are opinions. Appraisals are just that. They, they're not, it's like sometimes when you talk to some engineers, engineers think of five, five decimal places this way, appraisers think five decimal places this way. So it's, it's, it's a broad area, but we always try to find ways that we can find common ground with the taxpayer. But we also want to try every single time to maximize the taxpayer's savings with some kind of exemption that they might be entitled to, working through qualifications and authorizing those exemptions. But to highlight some of the activities for 2024, I've kind of broken this down into a couple of little categories. The first thing that we did this year was we launched a new website. Back in, actually, prior to September, I came to the appraisal district September the 18th of 2023, but prior to that, the 23 board of directors had approved transitioning to a new and improved website. Our old, our old one was outdated, it was cumbersome, it was hard to find things, but during the week of February the 5th, we launched a new website. The main goal of this new website, pardon me, the main goal of this was to provide more tax, a more taxpayer-friendly experience. That was the number one goal. Better organization of our data was another goal that we had, and of course, which this allows for an improved navigation when you have the, the data organized better. And then finally, more transparency. We wanted to make sure that we were putting information out there that the public needed and the public wanted and can readily access. We've received quite a bit of good, positive feedback from the launching of this website, and we, we built, we believe that it will just improve over time as we add additional features, things of that nature. Other efforts that were taken to generate more communication and better transparency, we've implemented some other things, a quarterly newsletter, taxing unit meetings, and I'm working on a new revised 2025 budget. But with our quarterly newsletter and transparency being the main motivation here, we started this newsletter, actually started in October of last year, but we really kind of kicked it off better at the beginning of 2024, but it allows us to highlight new tax laws that are out there that people may not understand, be confused about. It also allows us to give the property owners tax-saving opportunities, us talking about homestead exemptions, and there's a lot of different type of exemptions that property owners can get, which will save them money. I think in the last one, we also talked about how a tax ceiling, how a tax, a tax ceiling and the appraisal cap works, which will save property owners money. So it allows us to emphasize some of those things, and I'm also trying to put a new spot in the quarterly newsletter to say, hey, did you know our website will allow you to search for this, and do you know you can find this on our website? So those are the kind of things that we're doing. We try to email that newsletter to all the elected officials and all the taxing units in Hood County, but we also make it available on our website in the news section of our website, so everyone in the county, everyone in the world can read it if they want to. But that's, that's one thing that we're trying to do, to reach out and communicate better with the taxing units and the public. The second thing, which is more targeted towards taxing units specifically as far as communications, is a taxing unit meeting. In October of last year, I started hosting a monthly taxing unit meeting, and for this purpose of this particular meeting is to just get information directly into the hands of the taxing unit people, the officials that will use it. We primarily focus on everyone that deals with budgets, deals with revenue, projections, and tax rates. Chris has been to a couple of these meetings, and Ava is one that has been a regular member coming to the meeting as well. We started off pretty slow. It's been kind of slow, but I, I feel like the more I talk about it, the more I get a few people coming, it's going to be more of a, a meeting that the staff will be attending on a regular basis. I will shameless plug, so to speak. I heard that. This, this May, and we're having another meeting, no, we've already had our meeting for May, but this June will be an important meeting to come to because we're going to certify the appraisal role on July 20th or 25th, and so I'm going to really try to encourage most of the CFOs, the budget people, to get down there for that June meeting because we're going to be talking about June, June numbers, June estimates, and then the certification that'll be upcoming. So that's my goal, is to get the taxing unit folks there, then they can come back and tell you how smart they are after they've come and talked and talked with us and gotten questions answered and me providing information. I told them, I said, you can go back and tell them you thought of this all on your own, I don't care, but it's important to get the information out to the people who need it the most. And then finally, on the communication transparency front, I am, I'm reworking our budget. Our budget for Hood County right now is a two-page document. The budget I'm reworking is going to wind up being about a 20-page document, and the whole purpose of it is to provide more comprehensive details of how the appraisal district will budget its funds, not just give you one number for office supplies, but we're going to try to break things down by the financial needs of the department or the segment that we have in the appraisal district. You'll, you'll be able to get a glimpse of really what the appraisal, the appraisal department's doing using where money is being spent there. You'll get a better idea of general operations of where, you know, the entire appraisal district, how utilities are being spent and things of that nature. I kind of gave the board of directors at our last meeting a sort of a glimpse of what I'm shooting for. I made them give them all back to me because I knew the numbers were not good, and I didn't want any false numbers getting out there, but we will be coming up with a new budget, a more comprehensive budget, giving you more information, and again, I think the point being more transparency for the appraisal district. I remember that two-page budget because when I was here over 15 years ago, I, I didn't develop it, but I used the same format that the prior chief appraiser had, but it's time to change. Actually, it's been coming for a long time. Some other activities that are going on with the district, more down-to-earth, more specifics, the nuts and bolts of what we do is we've sent out our 2024 appraisal notices. I'm sure a few of them got that in the mail. To kind of give you some compare and contrast, in 2023, we had about 45,000 appraisal notices to go out in the mail to the taxpayers. This was a direct result of basically not, not achieving the local value through the state comptroller's property value study for Granbury SD. So in 2022, so in 2023, the comptroller came back in for another review, and it was important that the appraisal district pass that secondary review, and so values went up quite a bit in 2023. As a result, we had to send out 45,000 appraisal notices. Now, by law, it says that if the value goes up by $1,000 or more, I'm required by law to send a property owner a tax appraisal notice, and so 45,000 went out. In, the district's values were low in 2022, but in 2023, values had to be increased to get back to the true representation of market value, as close to it as we could get. In '24, we were much closer to a true market value, and as a result, we mailed out just over 18,000 appraisal notices. So the appraisal notice number went down considerably, and with help from the state legislature and the passage of a lot of bills last session, people's taxes went down for 2023. I think I reported one time in here before that we had, actually got a lot of phone calls asking, are you sure this is right? Because my, my taxes went down a lot, and if you were, if you have the 65 and older exemption, you should have seen a fairly decent decrease because of some of the legislative work that took place. But some people were amazed at, at how, how low the taxes had become and had reduced because of those adjustments that were required. Anytime we send an appraisal notice, you got to talk about protest at, at the same time, because an appraisal notice will a lot of times generate a protest. So for 2024, let me back up. In 2023, as a result of sending out 45,000 appraisal notices, the appraisal district received about 7,500 protests last year in 2023. That was a result, a direct result of increased appraisals. Values went up and people, people came in and protested. This was an all-time record number of protests for Hood County. We'd never seen that level before. When you have that many protests, the thing that comes next, lawsuits. And in Hood County, last year, we received over 50 lawsuits on individual properties, and that again was a record number for Hood County. Now, what we, what we see a lot of times in the, in the way of lawsuit are more high-profiled properties. It almost doesn't make economic sense for a property owner that has a, has a residential structure to file a lawsuit. It costs so much money to file a lawsuit, hire an attorney, do all that, and sometimes the tax savings that you might generate from that doesn't make financial sense to do so. But when Home Depot does it, or Lowe's does it, or every hotel in town does it, and every apartment complex in town does it, you can get a lot of lawsuits really fast. The Walgreens, the CVSs, all of them, they, they're repeat offenders, as I like to call them, because they file a lawsuit every year, and that's what happened, plus, plus we got more in, in 2023. But this year so far, we've received just a little over 2,000 protests. So we're down substantially from the 2023 year of 7,500. Now we're down around 2,000. When they all settle out, I suspect it'll be somewhere between 2,000 and 2,500, and I'm believing that that also will translate into less lawsuits. So we'll have to just wait and see. Many of these blanket protests are filed by tax agents. Most tax agents will file a protest on every single property that they represent, and many times, they'll come back after the fact and say, I want to withdraw this one, this one, and this one, but we'll get protest on all of them, and then we'll work through, and they'll withdraw some, we'll settle some, and some they'll take on to the appraisal review board for, for a formal hearing. Now, and then lastly, can't go on without saying a little bit about the tax collection process. Give you a couple of dates and some percentages. By the end of December of 2023, we actually had collected 56 By the end of December of 2023, we actually had collected 56.4% of the current tax collections. Not unusual to only be 50% on there because the delinquency date's not until January the 31st. A lot of people wait until that timeframe to, to do that. But we were 10% higher at the end of December this year than we were last year. So a little bit more collections came in. By the end of January, we were at 83.4%. So it went up from 56 to 83% in one month. But we want to get to 100. In this case, we were still 6% higher than we were in January of 2022 or 2023, because they overlapped there just a little bit. Today, we're sitting at 97.206. And that's, that's pretty good. I always say that there are people that are going to pay their taxes and do pay their taxes. And they come in and they pay their taxes. Then you have this group of people that I call them, they forgot to pay their taxes. And they missed the January 31st deadline and they pay them sometime in February, February, March, April, that timeframe. And then there's typically a letter that goes in the mail in February saying, hey, you have a delinquency here and we'll see a rush of those come in. But when you get into the May timeframe, you're kind of getting into the category of the people who just either won't or can't pay their taxes. And so that's kind of where we are right now. We, we're, we're a little less than 3% out of total collections. And come July the first, these, this delinquent role will be turned over to the attorneys. The attorneys will mail letters, they'll, they're, they're kind of, if you've ever gotten one, hopefully you never have, but they're kind of ugly, you know, hey, if you don't pay your tax, we, we may have to sue you. And then the next one is, you didn't pay your tax, we're probably going to sue you and have to foreclose on your property. And it's just, they kind of get more ominous as they go. But ultimately, for those people who won't, who don't pay or won't pay, ultimately what might happen is a lawsuit could be filed to, to compel a person to, to pay their property taxes. It's a, you know, there's been a lot of talk about, do we go property tax, do we go sales tax, all this sort of stuff? Because of the litigation side of it, it makes property tax a really, really stable form of revenue for local taxing entities. But lastly, I'd like to say, the appraisal district is committed to offering better communications to the taxing unit partners that we have. I, I'm, I'm trying my best right now to, to do just that. Improve communications, make it more, and then again, trying to bring the taxing units to us, come down, sit down on a monthly basis, we have a meeting. When I was hired, the board of directors expressed to me their desire for better communications and also for more transparency. And, and I know that we've, the board and I have talked on several occasions about how to make that happen. And a lot of the stuff that we're doing today was ideas that I brought in, into the building and ideas that they said, we need to, we want you to do this as well. And so we've been working on those things. But I do appreciate the mayor for asking me to come tonight and giving me the opportunity to communicate what's going on. Another step of communication that I like. If you have any questions about the law pertaining to property appraisals or in general about how property taxes work, feel free to give me a call. I like, I, I teach, and so I'd like to talk to you about that, if you have any questions pertaining to that. But otherwise, I thank you, I appreciate it, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may, you may have.
Thank you. Counsel, the questions for Mr. Law? Comments?
Just one quick question. Those 7,500 protests that you, that you had in 2023, how many of them then turned out to be a valid protest and they want to reduce in their taxes? Which means at some point, there must have been an error done by the taxing folks that, when they, when they originally did the taxes on them.
Actually, you'd be surprised at the number of people who just simply don't show up for a hearing. I, I would, I would venture, I wouldn't venture to say half just simply don't show up, but a lot of people don't. A lot of people will get that appraisal notice in the mail, they'll get mad and they'll file a protest. The protest form is right on the back of the appraisal notice and they'll send it in. Then, then they'll go through the process of asking us for information. Why, you know, what, what evidence do you have? And we'll comply by state law and we'll send them the evidence. And some people, some people at that point will say, okay, well, I didn't realize that two houses on my street sold. And, and Lord, did I didn't, didn't realize at all that they sold for that much. So they, those folks either will withdraw their protest or they won't show up for, for the hearing. And we get a lot of no-shows in that particular case. With the case of tax agents filing these blanket protests, as I said earlier, many of them will file protests, but then they'll come back with saying, hey, I really don't want to talk about, you know, 20 or 30. And they may have filed 100, but they'll, they'll withdraw them or something like that. But the other thing, when you say, well, there must have been something wrong, or how much of it comes to reduction in taxes, these days, with the market being a sharp, and I, I'd have to go into like a whole lesson of the appraisal cap mathematics. But when property values have been increasing at the rate they've been increasing over the last several years, this 10% appraisal cap on a homestead has been causing the, the value used to calculate taxes to be more flat. And so yes, if your value goes up, but your appraisal cap's here and you get a dip in value, it doesn't change your taxes at all, because your taxes are based on this lower appraisal cap. Yes, you may have got, seen a reduction or something like that, but it might not necessarily lower your taxes. Now, we appraise on a mass appraisal approach, okay? We don't, we don't do appraisals like you would have a realtor and a fee appraiser do it. We do it on a mass appraisal. And as a result, I, I don't have access to necessarily all the information that a fee appraiser would. For example, I won't let my staff come inside your house. For your safety, our safety, and for fairness, actually. We do our appraisals from the outside and we do them based upon the information that we can just obtain. I, I don't want, I, I have, trust me, in, in my 25 years of doing this, I have had to defend a lot of trespassing charges with, with appraisers going on people's properties and especially going inside a home. I don't like doing that, and so I just say, you can't do it. Plus, it's not really fair if I get to come in your home, but I don't get to come into Greg's home. I mean, I can see details, I learn information, but I don't learn it on other people's. So it's more fair, it's more equal, more uniform if we stay outside. We do our appraisals from the outside, the exterior, and we use appraisal modeling to help us determine values. I hope that answered your question.
So thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for giving us an update on the activities going on with HCAD. The agenda item tonight, as you have read it, is to request a forensic audit. And I took a few minutes just to go back and read the definition of a forensic audit. Is this something that you are amenable to? Do you think this is something that, as the agenda item is requesting, is this something that you are, again, amenable to?
Well, the idea of this audit relates to things that have happened in the past. I, I just came in September, September the 18th of 2023. So most of the things that I've, I have talked with the mayor, I've talked with Mr. Sorrell about this issue, and most, well, all of this happened before I got here. So, you know, the question comes up in a forensic audit per se, is somebody wants to go in and look, take a deeper dive, maybe take a more detailed approach at looking at things. When I have sat down with staff and I've talked to them about, hey, and I haven't talked to all my staff, I've, I've kept it to a, a very few people. I've asked them kind of, are you amenable to it? I've kind of asked them, what do you think? You know, I, everything that I know about what's happened in the past has come to me via hearsay. I've just heard stories, I've heard what people have said. I, I don't think that anything, any wrongdoing, I believe, has happened. I don't think that there was anybody who received money that they shouldn't have received money and things of that nature. I think it would be a pretty expensive venture to go into, to try to, to try to do this type of audit, to try to do this type of review, not knowing really what would turn up or what would be discovered. So, you know, quite frankly, I have a lot, a lot of work to do and a lot of things to do, to, to put all of that on, on hold and do an audit would, would take a lot of staff time, a lot of my time, when I could be working on other things that would be more beneficial.
Okay, thank you. Well, Mayor, I mean, this obviously is your agenda item, so I think at this point, at least from my perspective, I think it'd be good to hear from the mayor. Obviously, there's some things there that he thinks are, are of, of particular interest that would re, would require a forensic audit to really get in and understand either things that have happened in the past and are we set up as we move, move forward to, to do what you just said earlier tonight, which was be completely transparent, make sure that there isn't anything that's been misappropriated or, or anything having to do with a forensic audit. So, Mayor?
Well, I will certainly do whatever my board of directors ask me to do.
Mr. Corrigan, Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Wathlin, any comments? I agree with, with Mr. Law that I have no reason to believe that there's anyone that has taken, you know, any financial gain, not, I have no reason to believe that at all. I do believe though, that there are processes and procedures that have probably been inherited over two, at least two and maybe more, well, that would have been you, so at least two appraisals, appraisal, chief appraisers since, since that point in time. I can go into detail on what I believe those are, but that's also in, you've got about 170 pages of, of minutes, notes, invoices, items that all come from the appraisal district. And they, they raise concern. I mean, the initial concern, you guys are the, the class of 22, I'll call them, the directors of 22 took care of when they said, we are going to change auditors. We've had an auditor for 24 years and there's been nothing found in those 24 years. But the class of 22 says, no, we're going to change auditors and we're going to have a new auditor. Well, the auditor that was there for 24 years, for three years in a row, did not identify that excess funds were being withheld from being returned to the entities, which is a requirement. Now, when the Texas Rangers and the comptroller's office became involved, those funds were returned. And again, there's, you know, there's no, no, no one is gaining from this, but the taxpayers are losing from this. And, and that's, and that's, that's certainly not a criticism of you, your office at this one, or anybody. That was a process that was in place. It got set up in place probably in 2016 when the entities started funding a, an, a underfunded retirement plan. And it was, that happened, and then a couple of years, they returned the funds and then they started holding back the funds one more time because of a desire to build a building, which, you know, that's, you know, that's something that the directors, you know, are obligated to look at. But when they start spending money, it's at the approval of the entities. And there's a resolution process that you go through to request that of the entities. Never occurred, never occurred. Now, it's out of, nobody's gaining from that, but the taxpayer is losing from that because that's energy time that's being expended that's not at the direction of what the entities would like to be, or may, may like to be, you don't know, they never ask. So those processes did not, they were not discontinued after the money was refunded. In fact, a contract was written with a local architect. And that local architect contract continued to be paid up until the end of this past year, to the tune of $333,000. And the only reason I know that is because when the money was returned that should have been returned, $132,000 of taxpayer funds were not returned. And I asked why, and they said, because it's been expended in this area, this area. And again, your staff was more than efficient and more than forthcoming, you know, here it is. And that's the documentation that's in here. It's all from the appraisal district. And it shows a contract made, or a selling point made to the appraisal district by Government Capital Corporation, but it was not made to the appraisal district, it was made to the HCAD Home Office Corporation. Which if you go back and you look at the minutes and you look, you'll find that there's a resolution that has been made by the HCAD to form a home office corporation, naming the directors of the HCAD as directors of the Home Office Corporation, but not responsible to the HCAD. The, you know, the formation documents, bylaws, they all seem to contradict the tax code. So I asked, you know, are we operating on the tax code? Are we operating on the Home Office Corporation minutes? And for the next 18 months, the dissolution of the Home Office Corporation wasn't an agenda item. For 17 months, it was no action taken. The 18th month, the action taken was, don't put dissolution of the Home Office Corporation on the agenda item anymore. Nothing happened. And that's, I don't know what's out there, but I do sense that, you know, these process and procedures are in contradiction to our tax code and possibly even some of our, you know, laws and regulations as to how the appraisal district acts. And I, I don't have that skillset. And I think it's important that we spend 80 to $100,000, particularly when I'm looking at 333 that go, that went to a contract that no one, no one asked that you, that the appraisal district, and I don't want to be any, there's not personal on any of this, but that the appraisal district contract for the design and construction of an appraisal office, yet I think on your second or third day there, you had those, those, you know, those plans delivered to you. So I, I think there's quite a bit of reason to have a forensic audit. And it's about process and procedures, not about personnel. No, I do not think that there's been any one that has benefited from this, but I do believe that the taxpayers have not been benefited. In fact, I believe that we have been a little bit taken advantage through, through some antiquated process and procedures that need to be reviewed in depth. And I think we'll get their recommendation of, here, do this, do this and this, no, don't do this, and then we move forward. And if there have been situations where the taxpayer has been unduly burdened, then it's, you know, it's an error, it's an omission, and we have insurance for that. And we can recoup those dollars back to the entities.
Well, as, as you pointed out with, with regards to that Home Office Corporation, as you and I have talked, that due to the lack of documentation being turned in, that Home Office Corporation was never established. And of course, the board has taken action to, to rescind any, any and all decisions regarding establishing that. So that, that hopefully is an issue that has been kind of put to rest and is no longer an issue.
Yeah, but on February 13th of 2023, Government Capital gives to the Hood County Appraisal District Home Office Corporation a deal sheet whereby you can borrow $6,282,000. Excuse me.
I believe, I believe when they did that, they thought that the corporation had been established and set up properly, but unfortunately, when, I know that it was, it was my very first board meeting that I, that I attended, Mr., I think it was Mr. Rodriguez asked me to put this on the agenda to, to remove and, and rescind and, and to dismantle, if you will, this Home Office Corporation. And when I talked to the attorney that was working to set it up, he was the one that told me, he says, it's never been established, there's nothing to dismantle. But as I said, you and I have talked about that on several occasions, but I am aware of the, of the documents you're referring to.
Well, and, excuse me, you're also aware that literally they started talking about rescinding that Home Office Corporation in 1114 of '21 and went through the next year and a half.
I'm, I'm not familiar with that.
It's on the agenda. I, I mean, there's nothing in here that didn't, and, and I'm, I'm not arguing with you, but there is nothing in here that does not come from the HCAD minutes and agendas and invoices and proclamations, declarations. It's, and based on this and the 80-some-odd pages of emails that go back and forth between various other entity officials, county, the A County Commissioner and a, the school board representatives going back and forth discussing a, a building, how do we get a building built? Discussing, how do we make a land swap, one for the other? How do we make that land swap such that the, such that the, it's, you know, not obvious out there and it does not have to be going, undergo a competitive bid? Those are, you know, that's a procedure, that's just... Those are, you know, that's a procedure, that's just, that raises questions in my mind and the process that raises questions. And I think that it behooves us as, you know, we, we sponsor the directors, we recommend the directors, we vote and say, yes, this is the director's. We have some responsibility to our taxpayers to make sure that the directors are upholding and adhering to the processes and procedures that act in the best interest of the taxpayer. I don't feel that's happening. And tonight, we can, you know, we can, we can vote yes, we can vote no, but I think it needs to be put on the agenda, and I encourage everybody out there to go through these pages and make your own decision.
Mayor, I've got a couple of questions.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Are, are you making the assumption that the home office is still active? Is that what you're saying?
No, it was active for three years, and I'm making the assumption that it has yet to be resented.
So, so you're saying that it's still active?
Is it?
That, that's what I'm asking. Are you under the assumption?
No, you're the president of the board. You tell me.
It's not.
It's not? So have you rescinded it?
Yes.
When?
You can look up the minutes. I don't have the minutes exactly in front of me.
This year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this year.
Well, and, and too, like I said, when I started talking to the attorney that was establishing it, and, and it's my understanding that the board did have a, as, as the minutes reflect, the board did have a meeting to approve the articles of incorporation, the bylaws, the, the documents. That was approved by the board, but the chief appraiser at that time never sent any of that information back to the attorney to have the next process completed, which would have been registering with the Secretary of State, from what I understand. So whenever I was asked to put something on the agenda to dissolve this corporation, and I, and I called and talked to the attorney and said, please bring me up to speed, because I'd literally been on the job less than 30 days at that particular time, he, he, he kind of stutter stepped a little bit and says, wait a minute, I, I, I don't even think that that was finished. And he went and looked and came and said, yeah, he says, there is no corporation because we never got the paperwork back to file with the Secretary of State. So yes, the minutes reflect that there was maybe an intention to, to establish something based upon someone's advice, I don't know whose, but the process of it actually getting set up, it never, that never happened, from what I'm being told.
Well, there is the minutes in the, well, I don't know about set up, but there, in the minutes, it does name the director that said, here, let's go do this. But what process or procedure is it that, you know, and that encourages the board of directors, as in the Government Capital's Facility Improvement Financing for a Texas Appraisal Districts? It says, "Since Chapter 6 of the Tax Code does not expressly allow appraisal districts," by the way, I think it expressly disallows it, "to pledge revenues or property as security for debt instrument, a nonprofit corporation is created, the holding company, to hold fee simple title to the property during the term of the lease purchase agreement. The holding company will not be an agency or instrumentality of the CAD, the appraisal district, but will be governed by a majority of the members of the CAD Board of Directors." So if you're not an agency or instrumental, instrumentality of the CAD and you set up a corporation, why do we bother appointing directors? If they're going to appoint themselves to be directors of a subcorporation and then borrow money or attempt to borrow money, $6.2 million, actually, there's two in there. There's one for three and a half, that was early on. And they actually, just prior to that, they'd already bought a piece of property.
Mayor, that's, that's, that's no different than the city council being on the historic properties or Granbury Historic Properties and being not only city council board members, they're also board members of the Granbury Historic Properties or the church board of directors or the city council. I mean, those are subboards that the same people are board of directors. The city council is a board of directors of the Granbury Historic Properties, but that doesn't, that doesn't, I mean, the, the appraisal district, you even pointed out, it's not even on the state, it's not even registered. You pointed that out, that the home office is not registered properly. You pointed that out to me. I looked into it. It was never, we, we went to the, we went to our lawyers to, to find legal grounds on this. And yeah, that, that was done prior to the board or, or us getting on the board. And, and you're right, these board of directors have been appointed by the different entities, and they've been making changes, and I want to point out some of those changes. You have a whole new set of board of directors on there. New appraisal review board has been changed last year in how they've been appointed. So those are all new members on the appraisal review board. We had the resignation of a chief appraiser, all right? We hired a veteran chief appraiser, and, and that goes to some of the policies and procedures that were being followed by the old chief appraiser. You take guidance, or we as a council take guidance from Chris Coffin. Chris Coffin's been here years, he has experience, he is a city manager. He is, his job, as he states it, is to keep us out of jail because of the things that we do or the things that we say or the actions that we take as, as a city council member. That's what a chief appraiser's supposed to do for the board of directors at the appraisal, at the Hood, Hood Central Appraisal District, is to, is to make sure that we are following the law. As board of directors, we may not always get it right, we don't have everything in our back pocket, and that's what we rely on the administrator of that board to do. We weren't getting that during that timeframe.
And we're, we're in violent agreement on that.
So we went out and we hired a veteran chief appraiser who could provide that type of, that type of leadership and type of information and knowledge to our board of directors. Let me keep on going on this. We returned the land and building fund back to the entities without a three-quarters majority approval out of good faith. We didn't have the, you didn't have the votes to do that, but the board of directors took action to go ahead and give that money back. We worked with the district court.
Wait, stop there. You gave the money back for why?
We didn't, the board of directors gave it back in good faith. There was, there was not an action...
We didn't, we didn't have to vote on that. There was action, there was action by the Texas Rangers, there was action by the controllers. The check didn't come until the Texas Rangers and the controllers came in and audited the process and found it to be lacking, and I am...
That is, that is, okay, we'll go with what you said. Let me finish. Work with the, we also worked with the district court to release the tax sales of excess funds holdings back to the taxing entities twice. All right? We worked last year's budget. We also went to the Hood CAD Home Office Corporation and we dissolved it. We started a quarterly newsletter to the entities. We've been, the board of, this board of directors has been doing, has been making policies and procedures to, to better service our taxing entities and the people that have appointed us to be on that board. We've done the new website, we've created a new budget, you know, we hold many meetings for the tax entities. We have an almost an open office door policy that you, that the tax entities can go to Jeff, our chief appraiser, and ask him questions. I mean, he has provided invaluable information to the, to the commissioner's court on certain issues and votes that they had based on what's, what they have to deal with. You know, and the board of directors have taken the step to put in, in writing, policies and procedures, and we passed that this year. So we, as a board of directors for the chief appraisal district, have been making those changes. And now you're asking all the entities to fork out $100,000 on a forensic audit that the city's only going to contribute 6% and then the county and the school district are going to have to front the majority of that blunt. The city is 6%, the county's around 28, and then the school district's around 65%. So you're saying that you want to save taxpayers' money, but you want to spend $100,000 of taxpayers' money for a forensic audit?
But you've, the appraisal district has already spent a documented $387,000 on design and construction fees for a building that they have not been authorized.
Okay, so you want to spend $100,000 more thousand to find out what?
How much more have you spent? You had $2 million up till last year, nobody knew about. Now then, you've continued to spend, when that was shut down, you knew you weren't going to build a building, but you continued to spend $387,000 on a contract that marginally would yield $40,000 without, you know, without, it's not, not your minutes? You know, we need a line-by-line forensic audit to determine what was done where and when, and then to set a process and a procedure so it doesn't happen again. You're spending taxpayer money, it's not about how much Granbury City gets back, it's how much taxpayer money is being spent erroneously. And how much time did you guys spend on designing and building a building that was director time that could've been spent in other areas?
If I, if I may, Mayor, one of the things I want to make sure that we characterize things correctly, and that is that, yes, there was money spent on an architect to design. Nothing has been constructed, though. There, there has not been anything constructed. And you said, design and construct. We haven't done anything as far as construction, so I just want to make sure that that, that's clear there.
I was just quoting the, the contract.
Yeah, I think it was like construction documents, to create, to create design and have a construction document that could go out for bid. I mean, you know, one could argue that there is some prudence in that if we want to build a building or if we want to buy a building or something like that, then you kind of need to know, well, how much is it going to cost? You know, so what, what do we want to build? How big a building do we want to build? So there, there could be some, some argument to say, yeah, it was necessary to, to spend some money on, to getting some designs and things of that nature so we could go out for bids if, if we ever got there. I will say that the board of directors on two different occasions, and they are in the minutes that you have and we provided you, that the board did ask that the then chief appraiser to go out on two different occasions to seek approval from the taxing entities. And I can't speak as to why, I wasn't there, but that didn't happen. You know, he, he didn't get that approval or he didn't understand the approval that, that he was needing to get. But the board was, was proactive from that standpoint of saying, go get the approval from the taxing entities.
Absolutely. And the, and the architect in the emails even encouraged them to go get, I mean, he knew that there was approval needed. He also knew that approval had not occurred, and yet...
And I don't, and I don't know, and I, I can't speak for him, I don't know to what extent his knowledge about the approval process was.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Mayor, I just think, I think it's important that, I mean, we have our city attorney sitting right here with us tonight. I think he's pretty well-versed on all the details in the 171-page document that we've all had an opportunity to read, and I'd like to ask him for his, his comments and his point of view on this.
Well, just, just briefly, first of all, Jeff has been fantastic to work with, actually. He's been very accommodating, very helpful with this process. I, I guess really what it boils down to is during the course of our conversations, we've talked about issues involving entity credit in the past, right?
Correct.
Not really sure, but all of that's accounted for, right?
I, I can't speak to it. I mean, I'm, I'm not an auditor, I'm, I'm relying on the audits that we've received in the past from the auditors.
So, so you can't speak to it, there's still a question out there. We talked about the lack of board action and amendments being made properly regarding contracts, correct?
We have.
We've talked about the lack of budget amendments to, to, to encumber those contracts, correct?
We, we have talked about that, we might not necessarily agree on that.
We haven't gotten to the bottom of it all, but it's still a question, right?
Yeah, we've, we've had two, two attorneys have different opinions on that.
Absolutely. A lack of agenda items, actions that were taken by the folks that were there before you, obviously, without direction, without minutes, without complying with open meetings potentially, I'm going to say potentially, right? We've had these conversations.
You and I, we've talked about it, yes.
There's still questions out there about that. We know that there were money spent on what could be characterized as feasibility studies, geotech-ing on property not under contract and not owned by the HCAD. That's tax dollars spent on somebody else's land, and now they got a, they got a geo-study and, and we've seen the, the invoices for that, we know that that was paid for by, by tax dollars. So really, number one, I say thank you for all of the changes that we've discussed, the increase in the budget, the new policies and procedures, the, the things that you're doing, I think are fantastic, but at the end of the day, what that truly is for me is an indication that there was some real trouble in the past, that we have a list of changes that goes on and on and on. And I appreciate that you're doing that. So where the council and all of the taxing units said at this point, to me is crystal clear, they, they, they do one of two things. They say, Jeff, we like what you're doing, we want to see you go forward with it, we want to help you with it, and we're just going to ignore whatever else may be out there and look the other way. Or they come to you and say, no, we need to make sure that this was taken care of, it's dealt with right, the ultimate responsibility of oversight, although I will say, has been failed by all of the taxing units over the last several years. But now they're stepping forward, as we saw at the end of 2023, like we discussed the other day, there was a disapproval of a budget because they said, wait a minute, now we want to start paying attention. And so I think that's what the request for the forensic audit is, is to go back and look at all of these issues that you guys are addressing, be able to show all of the taxing units, here's where the money went in, here's where it was used, here are the processes that maybe were avoided, maybe weren't. Get to the bottom line of all of this, and then use that to go forward with everything that you're implementing now for a better HCAD, right?
Yes, I absolutely want to move, move the HCAD forward with better policies, better procedures, and, you know, I've been working on some of those that, that will be beneficial and be helpful. So absolutely, I'm in, I'm in support of better policies and better procedures going forward.
Mayor, Mr. La, during my working career, I was audited a lot. Not that there was anything going on or they found something, but it was part of the practice. And at the end of each of those audits, I learned something, and we made a change or we did something a little bit differently, and it was under the advisement of the auditing department. And I certainly understand the time that's involved. There was time involved with my staff when the auditors came in, and, you know, they stayed in my office for a couple of weeks and got through everything. But I think one of the things you mentioned earlier, which I appreciate, and I think the city works very hard on that as well, is transparency. And making sure that, you know, everything that we do, and the mayor says it from time to time, you can go in and look at every check that we've written, and to make sure that we are transparent out to the community. I think, as, as our city attorney just mentioned, I think there's some things that, that may come up, that may not be anything eye-opening or, or that will really just be, as the mayor pointed out, that will help with some policies and procedures. I think we owe the audit, I think, to our community, I think we owe it to our, to our taxpayers. And I think as you look forward and, and really trying to make sure that you're achieving all the things that you set out to do, I think it would just be, if it was me, I would, I would be amenable to do it, and I would get that behind me, get everything buttoned up, and I think all the questions and all the other things will, will probably subside. Thank you.
Well, I, I appreciate your comments, and I want this council to know that I'm, I'm not up here saying you should not, you cannot do an audit. As I said earlier, I will do whatever my board of directors tells me to do. They will have to be the ones that authorize the expenditure of funds, putting, putting money in the budget, they will have to do that. And if the board comes back and says, yes, we're going to do that, then I, I'm like you, I think going through an audit will... then I'm like you, I think going through an audit will reveal things that maybe need to be changed, and it'll also maybe clear up some things that they're not an issue. You know, I think audits can work both ways. They can reveal things that need to be fixed, and then can reveal, "No, you're doing this absolutely correctly." And I've been through a lot of audits, too, over my career, too.
I just want to reemphasize, this is, to me, this is about process and procedures. This is not about personalities or people. I don't have any indication of that, but I do know that the taxpayers have not been treated fairly in this regard, as it appears in all of these, in these documents from the appraisal district, that, you know, everybody is available to read. I mean, you just go through here, this is not transparent, and it was not needed, and it was not budgeted, it was not approved by any of the entities, yet for three years. That process just continues along, and it continues to cost the taxpayers money. Mr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, just to point out, Mr. Bell, that, you know, the Hood Central Appraisal District goes through an audit every year, just like the city does. But what they're requesting is a deep forensic audit. This is totally different. Not only do you have to take time away from the staff that's there to do a regular audit that we still have not completed and not received this year, now you're requesting and going to approve for a more extensive audit that, in my opinion, is not going to reveal anything that hasn't or will not get fixed with the Board of Directors that is currently there. So that's what you're voting on right now. Yes, your company goes through audits, the city goes through audits, I mean, but this is different, this is going to ask for more time, and it's going to be more expensive. We're already paying for an audit for the Hood Central Appraisal District. Now you're asking for additional cost in the audit and more time of the staff at the Hood Central Appraisal District. Just want you to know that.
I want to make that comment once again. Twenty-four years, the auditor audited us, audited the appraisal district. Never found anything. Also want to comment that the audit that you are undergoing, and we undergo at this point in time, there's always that statement at the end of the audit that says, "In to effect, we have relied on all of our management, and all of our, have relied on the management to present all of the information and to present it in a proper form. We take no responsibility for X, 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 and Y." And those are, you know, fraud, other activities that would indicate that this is not just a financial audit, it is an audit into the process and procedures. They don't do it, because it is expensive. That's why you have to have this. If you want auditing of the process and procedures, you have a forensic audit. If we want, if the audit finds that the money was not spent appropriately, then we have a claim, we have an insurance claim. If we don't, it's just out there been spent against or without any of the entity's approval.
So is there, Mayor, is there something that tipped you off or that you've seen in the documents that's been provided to you as that the Hood Central Appraisal District is hiding or not telling you something?
Oh, no, no, the Hood Central Appraisal District has been absolutely forthcoming in providing all of the information I need. It's the information itself, this is not, this is not an appropriate process and procedure. You don't go out and deliberately try and find a way to get around the law because you don't like the tax code or the law, which is what happened in years past.
So would you say that that the new Board of Directors have been making those steps to prevent or change policies or implement new policy and procedures to prevent this?
No, I wouldn't.
Okay.
I haven't seen it.
You haven't seen it?
I have not seen it.
So the...
I asked, in August of last year, the existing Board said that they would rescind, they would consider rescinding the Home Office Corporation. And in January of this year, it still had not been rescinded. I've not seen any minutes to show that it has, and it would have to have been in the last month. Was it rescinded last month?
No, sir.
No?
There wasn't anything on the agenda last month.
And there's still nothing in the minutes to show that it's rescinded. And it took until the first of the year to get the identification of where did the money come from, the two million dollars that was returned to the entities. That, the minutes for that were not made as well, until earlier this year. They got made this year.
I can't speak directly to that, but it was my understanding, at the end of the year, or at the end of the audit, whenever the auditor said, "There's this much revenue over expenses." It was my understanding that the Board had taken, and put it on their agenda, and had taken action to say, "We're going to commit those funds for the purposes of building a building." Now, I'm speaking straight-up hearsay on that, that's what I was told. Now, you've obviously done a lot of reading of the minutes and things like that that I have not put into going back that many years, but that's what I was understanding, that's where the money came from. It was money that could have been refunded back to the entities, but the Board obligated it or committed it to a building project.
That was not authorized.
Yes, you're right. Well, it wasn't necessarily, nobody had gotten authorization to go build a building. But if you want to say they were saving money towards that in the event they did get authorization, they were, it was my impression that the Board was sort of going to self-fund or fund a large portion of this project if it went forward.
Right, with no authorization. And, you know, I have eighty pages of emails here that talk about the fund, buying the land, swapping the land.
Like I said, I said already that the Board asked the chief appraiser to get the authorization, but that didn't happen, yes, that didn't happen.
Mr. Law, does the Hood Central Appraisal District still have the Hood Central Appraisal District Home Office Corporation?
To my knowledge, it does not exist, and it never did exist.
Okay.
And there was no money ever deposited with said corporation.
So they don't have any money in there?
To my knowledge, there's, a bank account was never opened, to my knowledge. I mean, I haven't opened, I haven't opened any bank accounts in that regards. I mean, you were there longer than I have, and I would ask you, did you go through the process of opening up a bank account for it?
No.
But would that be, wouldn't that come out in a forensic audit? Where, the line items, if there was money there?
Well, I guess if it was a forensic audit on the financials, I guess it would come out as to whether there was any checks written to the Home Office Corporation or not.
Right, and since there are no minutes to the Home Office Corporation, we don't know.
Yeah, but there's, if there was one, there would have been a bank established to accept that money, and to transfer that money would have been done by the Board of Directors, and the chief, the president of the Board of Directors would have been one of the signatories of that bank account. And I did not sign any signator for the Home Office Corporation to start financial, a financial account.
Well, that's why I've asked for a forensic audit, because I'm not a forensic auditor.
I might add, there would also be an entry in our balance sheets. Now, I recognize in the past, our balance sheets weren't put on the internet as transparency, whereas now, every time we have a board meeting, we're putting out, not on the agenda, we're putting out the packet, which includes all of our financials for that particular month or two months, depending on how often we have a board meeting. So the financials would reflect if a check was written, but as you know, we've just started putting that on our internet since I've gotten here.
Yeah, thank you for making my point. Other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just clarify for me, and maybe, I'm not sure if this is a question for Mr. Law or it's a question for Eddie. You said that you'll do whatever the Board directs you to do.
Correct.
Which, okay, so if we adopt this resolution, does the Board not take any action unless there's a majority of the taxing entities that request this? So we'd have to have other entities adopt a resolution just like this, and then forward enough of those to you? Or what would cause you to request Mr. Law to do a forensic audit?
As the chairman of the Hood Central Appraisal District, most of my decision-making is done through legal counsel. So I would go to legal counsel of the appraisal district and ask, "What direction are we given if this happens? This scenario happens, okay? And what does the Board of Directors have to do if this scenario happens?" So at this time, I don't know, I don't know what that action would be. Does that make sense? So I don't know if the city passes it, if, I mean, the city passes a resolution. If no other entities pass it, it's strictly up to the Board of Directors to do whether or not they want that to be done or not. And the Board of Directors is a separate government entity, just like city council. They have the sole authority to make their own decisions without having another government entity make those decisions for them. Does that make sense?
Mr. Overdear, I'm kind of like Mr. Kaufman in that, you know, I sit kind of the same seat he sits in. He couldn't go make a decision like this on his own without getting council's approval and things of that nature. That's what I mean by, "I'll do whatever the Board says" because they will be the ones ultimately making the decision. I'm not a lawyer, I want everybody to understand that, but I have read through parts of the tax code with regards to these type of issues. And there are places in the tax code that says that if three-fourths of the taxing entities pass resolutions to do, like, for example, not approve the appraisal district's budget, then the appraisal district has to, by law, go back and redo a budget. If the certain majority of the taxing entities pass a resolution to disapprove an action that the Board of Directors did, they can do that. I don't find anything in the tax code specifically addressing audit standards. It says that we do have to have a financial audit every year, but it doesn't really address what if a city, a county, a school wanted us to have two audits? You know, it doesn't address that particular issue. So I'm like Mr. Rodriguez, we would have to get a legal opinion from our attorneys as to, okay, if the city passes this, what do we do next? What are we required to do next?
Okay, so I guess, I hate to keep beating this horse, but... So without legal counsel, you can't tell me, if we pass this resolution, what that's going to allow you or not allow you to do?
That's correct.
Yeah, I mean, whether this gets passed or not passed, it's still up to the Hood Central Appraisal Board of Directors to determine what they want to do. I mean, it would be something like a senator coming down here and telling a city councilman, "Hey, I wrote a resolution." Maybe I'll just stop there, because I don't want to put a comparison. It's just like somebody telling us what to do on city council, or telling us how to vote, or telling us what we need to do because we're in a position that we are in. I think every city council person up here reads the agenda item, and they make their own decision. And I hope that they make their own decision. And they're not influenced by an outside organization or outside government entity or another government body directing them to make those type of decisions. And that's similar to what the Hood Central Appraisal District is, is their own government body. Each board member makes their own decision based on that. So I can't tell you what the Board of Directors are going to do until, I mean, just like the city council has legal services, and we hire legal attorneys for different things that the city encounters, that's exactly what the Central Appraisal District is going to do. They're going to hire their lawyers based on the experience in specific areas and the situation that the Hood Central Appraisal District. The one thing that you don't hear today is the opinion of the Hood Central Appraisal District's attorney's version versus where you've heard the city's attorney's version. There's a difference in what one government body is allowed to do versus another government body allowed to do. That's why you always go to court, you have, you know, defense attorney and a prosecution attorney, and they interpret the law. I don't interpret the law, I just go by the advice of my legal counsel. And that's what we do here.
Mr. Wadley?
The annual audit that you're talking about, the one that Eddie mentioned, and, you know, and we have an annual audit, that just looks at last year's books. My impression is, from what the mayor's talking about, is an audit that looks over the last several years when this potential building, doing a building started, and look at the whole process that it went through, money that was spent on architecture fees. I really enjoyed reading this one-hundred-and-seventy-one-page document about all these emails back and forth. A lot of it looked, I shouldn't say forced, but, you know, there were people that were trying to make things happen, and in reading that, I didn't know who had the authority to do what. I mean, I'm hearing now that they shouldn't have even, well, or the company was never formed or whatever, but the corporation. But in reading that, it sounds like it was there, and they were, you know, the previous chief appraiser really wanted this building to happen, and there was a lot of emails between him and the architect and the school board, or the school superintendent was in there. I mean, there was just a lot of emails back and forth. But what I, the impression I'm getting is that this forensic audit goes back and looks through the entire process. It's not, it's way different than the annual audit that says, "Here's what we did last year, and it was good." You know, it would be like with the city going back years, if there was a question about something that had happened, to determine, "How did it come to this point, you know, that this happened?" And so, to me, in addition to the audit, maybe providing new processes and procedures like the mayor mentioned, I like the idea that you get a new baseline. I mean, you started with this job just a year ago, and...
Less than that, about seven months.
But, you know, it shows, even if there's, and I'm not suggesting any money went to the wrong hands, it's just where did the money go? And in some of the discussion tonight, all that hasn't really been answered. That's not clear in my mind at all. And so, an audit of this nature, it seems like it would get you back to just a new baseline where you know exactly what happened in the past. And for you, I would think that would be real beneficial to know going forward. Everything's been squared away now, and now let's go forward, you know, the way we want to do it.
And you mentioned, Mr. Wadley, like, where did the money go? I question, where did the money come from? It wasn't in the budget. So where'd you get four-hundred grand to spend on an architect? It wasn't in the budget.
Is that a question for me?
No, it's not. You've asked some of the same questions.
Well, I think I kind of already answered that. It came from excess revenues that had been not refunded back to the taxing entities, but instead earmarked for a future possible building. So it was, it came from the entities. It came from the entities, and it was designated, as I understand it, as I understand it, it was designated, obligated, if you want to call it that, for a future building.
Glad you enjoyed the one-hundred-and-seventy-one pages, Mr. Wadley. Everyone does. You're, I appreciate you, I appreciate the appraisal district. I just don't think that we have a grasp on what's happened prior to your coming here. And I do believe that it is, not only to your advantage, but to the community's advantage that we spend a few extra dollars, and get this. And the reason that, you know, I wanted to put it on there so, because it's not fair that you come to us with your budget, and we say, "No, no, you need another eighty-five thousand dollars." And so, no, bring it at the same time, and have it in your budget. Or if you can do it before that, that's good, too. But have it in your budget and get it done for everybody.
So Mayor, let's talk about the financial piece of this. You're asking the Hood Central Appraisal District to put this in their budget, which is a hundred thousand dollars, is that correct?
I went online and I said, "Oh, my..." I went online and I said, how much does a forensic budget cost? They said 10 to $100,000. I didn't choose 10.
Okay. So...
Because I did want it to be over, you know, back to the beginning of this. How did this get started? And what's the process that, you know, continued for these years that the money just keeps being? You know, entity money, as you said, keeps being applied to projects and accounts that the entities have no knowledge of until, you know, right now.
Have you talked to any of the other entities that would be willing to pass a resolution like this?
Yeah.
Are they going to pass a resolution like this?
I can't speak for the other entities. I'm just saying they have knowledge.
Okay. How many other entities have you, do they know about this resolution?
Enough.
I'm just trying to gauge whether it would be fair to the other entities that don't want to go through this, that they're being forced to pay for this. And especially if you have one of the major entities, like the school district, that pays 65% of all our bills that don't want to go through this, or maybe a small entity that pays 1% that doesn't want to go through this. Do you want that to be divided by the entities that pass this resolution to fund this resolution?
It would be taken the same way that the tax code suggests that this be done. But the school, you know, with the land swap and, I mean, they're very active in the activity of this building. They, this was, you know, this was seen as a plus for them. So, yeah, I would hope that they would be totally involved in this as well. I would hope that they would want to make sure that the taxpayers' funds are being spent on what the entities have designed them to be. And I would hope that they would be very interested in transparency. Particularly, how many dollars do you bring in in taxes does the Hood's appraisal district bring in?
Oh, gosh. I don't know off the top of my head, honestly.
But it's hundreds of millions.
Oh, yes, yes. I'm trying to think if it's a billion. I don't think it's there yet, but yeah, it's hundreds of millions of dollars.
Yeah. And, you know, throw inference out there, but this is a two and a half to $3 million budget, expenditure budget. But there's another side of this that's handling hundreds of millions of dollars. We need to make sure that the processes and procedures are total and accurate, you know, all the way through.
I have a policy not to do math in public.
Thank you. Other? No? Yes, Mr. Wadley?
Question. So HCAD is not a for-profit organization, right?
That's correct.
You just collect the taxes and...
We're a special purpose local government.
So I've heard the expression a couple of times tonight about excess funds. How is there excess funds and what happens to the excess funds?
Great question. We'll adopt a budget, let's just use around $2 million number. We'll adopt that budget, we'll submit it to the taxing entities. As has been discussed, there are steps a taxing unit can take to disapprove that budget. That budget gets adopted by the board of directors. We then turn around and submit sort of an invoice, if you will, to the taxing entities. And it's based upon each taxing entity's levy, the amount of taxes that they're going to collect compared to the total amount of levy. Every one gets a different proportion. As Mr. Rodriguez says, the school, Granbury SD School is about 63% to 65%. The city's portion is around 6% and the county's portion's a little bit more. The GISD funds the lion's share of the budget. The county comes in second, the city of Granbury comes in third. And then Toller and Lipan and the other entities pay a proportionate share. So at the end of the year, when we go through our audit, which our auditors are coming in June of this year, we thought they were going to come in in March, but we got pushed back. They will come in and do a financial audit and say, here's how much revenue you brought in, here's how much expenditures you had. And that excess revenue over our expenditures are just that. Now, how do we achieve excess revenue over expenditures? Just like with any entity in any budget, you budget for things and sometimes you spend more in this area, but you don't spend as much. The biggest, the lion's share of our budget is personnel. And if I have an employee that terminates their employment with us and quits and goes and gets a different job, it might take me a month or two that I'm not paying their salary, I'm not paying their insurance, I'm not paying any retirement benefits and that we wind up not spending. Another area, there's two areas that I have absolutely zero control over in my budget, and that's litigation expenses and arbitration expenses. I can predict or try to predict how many people are going to file a protest, but I can't make sure of it. I can predict how many people are actually going to show up for their appraisal review board hearing, but I could be wrong. So, and so what we wind up doing is we budget a certain amount of money to pay the per diems of the appraisal review board members. Well, I might be over budget in that area, but maybe nobody shows up and I wind up not needing them as much. So that's how we wind up with excess revenue over our expenses. Plus, the appraisal district itself makes a little money. We, there's a rendition penalty that we get if people don't file their renditions on time or at all. We make interest on money. We sell some products that people might buy, maps or printouts and things like that. We don't generate a lot of revenue, but we do generate a little revenue ourselves. And we also add that to our budget. In other words, if I say we need $2 million, we may turn around and only allocate $1,950,000 because we might say we're going to generate $50,000 ourselves, something like that.
So you all collect the property taxes and then turn around and give it to the entities 100%?
100%, yeah. That's an excellent point to make too.
The point I was going to make is you collect the taxes and then if you give all the money to the entities, then the entities turn around and pay you our proportion of the $2 million budget?
That's correct.
Okay, so you don't withhold, like you don't hold out of the taxes for the budget and then just give the entities what's left?
It's two separate functions.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, it's two completely different.
That explains a lot to me, thank you.
And generally, most of the entities will either pay us on a quarterly basis to where we'll say, this is your share, and then they'll send in their funds quarterly. But everything that we take in from a tax dollar standpoint, 100% comes in and 100% goes back out to the entities.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman?
Jeff, thank you for coming tonight. I would like for you to follow up with that whole process. We stopped with the surplus. When there is a surplus or a deficit, let's follow through it and explain to everybody what the process is that's supposed to occur. And therein, I believe lies the problem.
Yes. Great, great follow-up question. Let's go back to my $2 million example. Let's say we only spent $800,000. No, no, $1,800,000. Let's say there's a $200,000 surplus. By law, that money has to either be obligated for something. And as Mr. Sorrell and I were talking about budget issues and attorney's opinions, we did some of that last year in 2023. Before the close of 2023, the board of directors did obligate about $100,000, say about $100,000 for future expenditures. That was intended to be made in '23, but we couldn't get the work done. So we obligated that. But anyway, got $2 million worth of excess proceeds. Law says I have to credit those back to the taxing entities. Now, it doesn't say I have to refund it, but many appraisal districts over the whole state of Texas for 30, 40 years have been writing checks back to the taxing entities saying, hey, here is your portion of those excess proceeds. Now, what has happened here, as I understand it, is that the board of directors obligated either all or most of that excess proceeds towards a building fund. And then as Mr. Rodriguez pointed out and as the mayor has pointed out, 1.9 something million of that was all refunded back to the taxing entities in '23? Because it was all refunded before I came on board. So the questions came up, as the mayor has said, and the appraisal district board of directors made the decision, you know what, here it is all back.
Follow-up question to that, is there a legal requirement to notify the entities that you're retaining those earnings or re-appropriating them to something else?
I would say that's a great question for a lawyer. I will say that I think there are some minutes in the appraisal district records. I can't point you to, you know, scripture verse and everything, but I think there were minutes that basically said, I make a motion that we take these monies and we put them towards the building project. So there is something possibly out there. And again, we'd have to look at it and see. But I think there's something out there that says we're going to put on the agenda to do something with these excess proceeds. And I think there's some votes that the board took to handle those excess proceeds, but...
Thank you, Jeff.
I didn't go to law school.
I appreciate you coming and enduring this long meeting. But this is truly a way for this body to communicate about this topic in no other way than is legal. This is the only way that this body can talk about this topic in a legal manner.
Certainly.
I'm sorry it's taken so much of your time tonight.
Well, I'm fully aware of the Open Meetings Act and I understand how, you know, it's kind of like he doesn't know how the rest of the board's going to vote with regards to will we do this, will we not do this?
Anybody? Anybody know other questions?
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Vale?
I would just say, you know, Eddie made a comment that, you know, we all should be voting the way, you know, we want to vote. I think we all do that, I would certainly hope. And I feel confident that that happens with our county commissioners and our school board. So I think they're going to have to, if this comes before them, they'll read all the information, look at it everything, and they'll decide if they vote on it, you know, how they best want to vote. And I think at this point that, as Councilman Rodriguez said, that they'll look, the board, Eddie and the board will look for their attorney advisement and their direction on this and they'll decide what they'll do. And obviously, we'll hear back from them and we'll see where this goes.
So do I hear a motion requesting that the Hood Central Appraisal District budget for a forensic audit to be provided to the taxing entities?
So moved.
Mr. Wadley makes a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Vale makes a second. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. I have one nay, Mr. Rodriguez, correct? Okay. Let's move along to the motion passes. Move along to 7.2. Consider proclaiming the city of Granbury a Purple Heart City through the Military Order of the Purple Heart Organization. Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, thank you, mayor, council. Our friend Colton Cottinger approached us about this a while back and we've been working through the responsibilities and what have you with it. It's, that goes along with this proclamation. And met with Colton again last week about this. And he's been doing his homework with the corporate office of this organization. This is a nationwide organization. To be able to say you're a Purple Heart City puts you on what they call a Purple Heart Trail. And we already do a lot of things for our veterans here. And Colton said that that's already recognized. I also wanted to recognize that Hood County is already a Purple Heart County. And, but I really felt like this was such a special event that the whole council needs to vote to offer this official proclamation. I think as unilaterally the mayor doing it loses its value. That we could have, if we have a council that votes unanimous to support this proclamation. And what this entails will be, I believe there's four signs proposed to go at the entryways of the city and the main highways. And logistically, the way we would need to work through that is work with TechDOT to get a permit to put a sign up with the proper breakaway pole that they require. And Colton has offered to pay for the Purple Heart signs themselves. We need to figure out how to fund the others. We can do that through the street department in the coming months. But I do need to offer this up as an item for consideration to the council. I'd be happy, Colton is here to answer any questions that may come up and we're happy to be able to talk about this tonight.
Mr. Cottinger, if you don't mind, if you'd come up, if there are questions, you'll be up here. Counsel, do you have questions, comments? Mr. Cottinger? Please don't make me have him come up for nothing.
Mayor?
Mr. Vale?
I would just say I've had an opportunity to speak with this young man and kind of watched all the activity that he's got going on and his heart for this. He's got a real passion for this and I just appreciate all that you do here in the county and the city. It's a special service that he provides and it's a real need that exists out there. And he, again, he has a real passion for this and we just really appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
Other comments? Okay. Mr. Cottinger? Okay, don't go away. So do I hear a motion proclaiming the city of Granbury a Purple Heart City through the Military Order of the Purple Heart Organization?
Mr. Mayor? I would like to make a motion to consider proclaiming the city of Granbury a Purple Heart City through the Military Order of the Purple Heart Organization.
Mr. Overdier makes a motion, do I hear a second? Mr. Rodriguez makes a second. Well, it appears that we are going to make that proclamation and since you're here and, oh. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. I believe we passed 6-0. Thank you. And since you're here, we're going to do the proclamation. Just so happens I ran into Mr. Cottinger yesterday. Did you have two of those burgers? Yeah, I thought so. We were out at the EMS, honoring the EMS, just saying thank you to them. And I look up and here's this young man. Let me read this official proclamation to you. "Whereas first created as the badge of military merit by George Washington in 1782, the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration presently in use. And whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award of decoration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to any member of the United States Armed Forces wounded or killed in combat with a declared enemy of the United States. And whereas the mission of the Military Order of Purple Heart charted by an act of Congress is to foster an environment of goodwill among the combat wounded veteran members and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, make sure we never forget. And whereas the city of Granbury has a considerable population of highly decorated military members, active duty and retired, as well as Purple Heart recipients or their relatives living in the community. And whereas the city of Granbury appreciates the sacrifices our Purple Heart recipients have made in defending our freedoms and believe it is important that we acknowledge them for their courage and show them the support they have earned. And whereas the city of Granbury wishes to pledge its strong support to the Military Order of the Purple Heart and for those who put their lives at risk in service of their country and their fellow citizens. Now therefore, I, Jim Jared, Mayor of the city of Granbury, Texas, as a confirmation of our commitment to honor those who serve and have served to keep our country free, proclaim Granbury, Texas as a Purple Heart City. It's given under my hand and the seal of the city of Granbury, Texas on this 21st day of May, 2024." Congratulations, Mr. Cottinger. The city has appreciated you.
I just want to say, this is an honor and thank you, mayor, thank you, council. I think everybody up here has supported everything that we've been doing. And I wish my grandfather was here. He was a Purple Heart veteran and a prisoner of war, so, thank you.
That was my grandfather and this was, he's in the cavalry in World War I. And as I said, so you got the badge or you had the sword, you had the, he says, no. He says, I kept the mules for the Cajuns. But that was the cavalry. Thank you, sir, and we appreciate your efforts here. And we're going to get you, we're going to get you official one of these.
Thank you again.
Oh, one more over here.
Thank you.
Thank you. The end of our agenda items. So I now declare that Granbury City Council is convened in open session, that all members are present. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. Section 551071, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated. Section 551072, deliberation regarding real property. And 551087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. So we are now adjourned into executive session. I now declare that the Granbury City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in the closed session and all council members are present. Counsel, any comments, any action? There are no motions, there is no action, there being no further business, I announce the meeting adjourned.